So I'm really impressed with the quality of applicants that we can present to you. And I'll just leave their names. I believe you have their background information. So I'm pretty sure you're ready already and you are impressed as well as I am. So the thirteen individuals that we are presenting to you today are Bruno Michi, Isara Asensio, Austin Batolden, Jeff Dissonette, David Denneke, Richard Donigan, Emily Kett, Svetlana Glinka, Laura Orr, Rianan Orezaga, Joe Pugh, Lisa Rogers, and Lindsay Short. And just in interest of time, I'll cut my presentation short.
Can I make a request? Can we match names and faces here?
Oh, yes.
Even if it just means having people stand at their table just so that we can...
So can all the PRB applicants see that you're here right now?
All right, you're welcome. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve and be here today. And questions?
Could you just, for people watching, tell me what the Police Review Board does and what these policies do?
So, great question, Commissioner. So the Police Review Board, most simply, hears misconduct, fully completed misconduct investigations and makes recommended findings and proposes discipline in misconduct cases and in officer assault shootings and accused deaths. These community members before us today will serve individually as part of a community member pool. The Police Review Board has five voting members. There is one slot allocated for one community member. In officer assault shootings and force cases, there are two community members that serve.
And then our, yeah, this is just advisory on the policies or is that the only function that the folks who are applying or who are going to approve today is taking turns to be on particular board reviews?
Yeah, so it's, the way it works is basically on an individual case, we will, the Police Bureau will put together the five voting members and the community members who are here today, it's just each one of them serves on a particular board.
And how is it selected? Which one sits on a particular review?
Oh, so that is done randomly with the review board coordinator. So a lot of it is based on availability of community members. And that's actually one of the biggest struggles, the point of getting volunteers and then having people kind of serve for their three-year terms. A lot of the boards are in the middle of the day and it can be anywhere from two hours to four or five hours. So the fact that we have so many community members who are willing to give up a significant part of their workday, I believe most of the community members who are volunteering for this particular three-year term are fully employed and/or have obligations with their family, like being full-time mothers.
About how much time would they be given in advance to know that they were selected for the board?
About two weeks.
Okay. And is there any attention paid on the selection to make sure there's a balance of women and men and racial diversity on the board?
So one, I believe one of the reasons why the auditor's office gives me the privilege of gathering the community members was so that we would do a pretty diverse and wide-reaching selection of community members. So one of the things that Irene does and other IPR staff members do when we are doing our outreach events is trying to go to particularly events that are aimed at women and particularly like new and emerging Portlanders. When you go back, let's say, six or seven years ago, we had a Police Review Board, particularly on the community member side, that was overwhelmingly retired individuals and overwhelmingly white, and it didn't really reflect our community. And particularly on police oversight issues, I think there's an important aspect of making sure that all Portlanders are represented on the Police Review Board because we all, as Portlanders, have a stake in the success of the Police Bureau and holding officers accountable. And these community members, as you've seen by them standing up, really are a very diverse group of individuals.
I appreciate that explanation. I'm also wondering, when you're going to see the five voting members and some particularly the one, is their attention paid to who the other four would be?
So the five voting members, that's determined by city code. So the officer, the involved officer's commander is one of them, the IPR director, assistant chief who's in charge of the branch, and a community member and a peer officer member. So those are the five voting members of the Police Review Board.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not being very clear, although that was the information to get out too. And if you look at, does the person appointing whichever one of the volunteers gets in on a particular case, look at, well, we've got four people with these demographics and make sure that we've got somebody who matches, for instance, if the appellant's for the homicide?
Oh, to my knowledge, that, I do not know that answer.
And you're currently, you and the auditor are currently in process of looking at the Police Review Board process and bringing back something to counsel?
So the Police Review Board process, no. So as we're all aware of, there was a focus group that looked at variety of changes to the accountability system. So what the auditor proposed was a relatively narrow attempt at fixing particularly issues revolving around the earlier stages of the administrative investigation process involving IPR, the Police Bureau's Internal Affairs, and then the appeal stage involving the Citizen Review Committee. The only change to the Police Review Board would be to allow community members to be able to be present during the back findings section of the Police Review Board and be able to speak at the Police Review Board, which they currently do not.
I thought at one point there was a suggestion to put more of the citizens and review committee on the board.
So that was part of the option of possibly merging the Citizen Review Committee's appeal function with the Police Review Board. There was significant public feedback on that. One of the biggest issues was the Police Review Board is not a public body, so there is not the ability to comment publicly. The city could choose to do that, but it would face significant issues from the employee side of possibly that being a mandatory subject of bargaining. And so that's where, I guess, the decision-maker within the city left it.
Well, thank you.
That excuse always was a thing of bargaining.
All of these roles, and thank you all so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So let me follow up on something that Commissioner Fritz raised. I'll have to step carefully here because I'm talking about a real case, so obviously I won't...
Get rid of the contract.
Now, folks, please do not interrupt me or anybody else. Commissioner Fritz raised the issue of gender balance on these panels. There was a recent case involving sexual misconduct by an officer. It was a male officer, and the entire panel that reviewed it was male. What are we going to do about that?
So, you know, so the Police Review Board, that is something that is within the Police Bureau. So the auditor's office's role is in recommending to counsel the citizen volunteers. From a global perspective of making sure that the, you know, all aspects of our accountability system reflects our community, I think that's part of the conversation that we have been having for the last year or so, particularly around changing the accountability system. Going forward, I think that's a conversation that I think we should have, as long as you're mayor as well with the future mayor, because it's going to be a long-term conversation. Of one, you know, part of it is the way our accountability system works, ultimately the decision rests with the chief of police and yourself as the police commissioner. Community has certain parts where it can kind of participate, but there's a lot of it that rests within the Police Bureau. The Police Bureau is not as diverse as our society is. You know, the Police Bureau is overwhelmingly male. So part of that is making sure there are more Police Bureau commanders, assistant chiefs who are female. So, because when you look at who the five voting members are on the Police Review Board, three of those slots are Police Bureau spots. There is one IPR slot and one community member slot. So, you know, on the IPR side, two-thirds of the managing folks at IPR are female. If you look at the Police Bureau, it's not going to be two-thirds. It's going to be eighty-something percent in the other direction. So I think part of it is starting with the Police Bureau.
Well, I'm glad that issue is both a Police Bureau issue and a structural issue and a practice issue.
But in that particular instance, if there is an allegation of sexual misconduct, the one most...
Fire the cop.
We do have the ability to make sure that there's a, both sexes are involved, is to choose one of the females on the, from this volunteer group and make sure that in those particular cases that there is somebody who looks like and identifies with being a...
Good suggestion.
That might be something that's important to the policy. I'd love to bring that back.
Yes, ma'am.
Good thing you put it. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, other questions? Thank you. Okay, let's take double testimony, please.
We have seven people signed up. First three things coming up are Cedric J. Wilkins, Joe Walsh, and Charles Bridge Crane Johnson.
I'm Cedric Wilkins, and I wouldn't mind being on the Police Bureau board. Something has changed my mind recently. A month ago, Joe and I started around about the issue of blood testing people after a car accident. And Mayor Hale says that those, like, thirty-three, thirty-four homicides by cars more than guns or whatever. Fifteen. It is possible that when people are going to be blood tested, they may resist the police, they may try to plead the police, and it might be necessary to have additional police officers to restrain this person or chase after them, whatever, to give them a blood test, which I insist is something Joe disagrees about, you know, sorts and seizure, but I don't agree with that. Because actually this week, some guy in the United States crashed a truck and killed ten people and himself.
Crashed a truck.
And they totally don't know if he was...
Crashed a bus.
I do agree with this. This is a couple of guys that now have recreational marijuana. Some people are blindsided. They think of fender drivers if they're high. And unlike alcohol, if you're high, let's say this, if you're, if you have a fender bender and you say, you almost have a heart attack, you should be stressed when you're driving. Deciding that you're totally relaxed is ridiculous. Your blood pressure should go up. So I have a problem with people who smoke or are on Prozac. I don't think if you're on Prozac, you should drive a car. You should be stressed. And it's a, that argument. So I'm saying that because of this, I've now changed my mind. I support the police contract because we'll need additional officers to support blood testing. So I agree with the mayor, Amanda Fritz, and the police contract. And you can boo me if you want, but I'm saying to stew that.
Boo.
Actually, you can't, folks. People here who merely oppose a police contract also do not want blood tests. Think about that. Okay, thanks very much. You'd like to be next.
Good morning. My name is...
You ever think of all the competition which prohibits illegal search and seizures? And that's part of it.
We take issue with the process. We all know in our hearts and our brains that we are in serious trouble and our mechanisms are not working as far as the police department is concerned. So we should redo them. My understanding of this is you have five members, and one is a community member. Is that accurate? So it's, you know, full votes, and then you have this community person that's sitting there with the cops. And they probably have their guns, but they always carry their guns in these meetings. That's not a good environment to have truth and understanding of what is going on. So you should redo it. And one of the ways you can redo it is to set up the charter commission. You promised the mayor when you came in that you would do that. You never did. And it takes the mayor to do it. You really have to institute the charter commission. So maybe you could say to Ted Wheeler, when he's coming in, to think about that and look at all of our commissions, all of our committees. Because they're not working. We know that. And whatever we're doing is not something we should continue to do. Because what I said last night is really accurate. We are one incident away from a riot that will tear the city apart. And we're all fighting to stop it. That's what I do. I fight to stop it. And if I anger people in the plaza, it's too bad. Because I've been in riots. I grew up in New York. I've been in riots. I know what a riot does. It's really scary, and it's really damaging. So we need to redo everything that we've been doing as far as the police is concerned. Look at it. And if it takes a charter change, make the charter change and give it to the people. Let them look on it. You have to get this city involved. It's not, you have a very small group of people that come here week after week after week. We don't get anything to this, by the way. We do this on our own. It's because we believe in what we're doing, whether you like it or not. We believe in what we're doing. And we will continue to do it, even with Ted Wheeler. Charge this. You have to make the changes. If you keep doing what you're doing, this city is going to be in serious trouble for one incident. And Mayor, you almost caused it last week. The way those cops came after those people, I missed it. But I watched it on video. It was awful.
Thank you. Johnson, go ahead. Good morning, commissioners. For the record, I've been identified as Charles Bridge Crane Johnson. And it turns out, I can't see this under the weird lighting, but it looks like I'm seated in what was the seat of that guy who's been charged by the Oregon Department of Justice Criminal Division with misdemeanor for shooting people in the back, or something related to that. I regret that I'm not really prepared, so I don't know who these other two gentlemen test by that time are. I can't tell you that that's part of the law more, that's Joe Walsh, a very diligent citizen. And on the next tab of my browser, it says Byzantine Portland Police, fourteen million nine hundred thousand results. The top result will be hopefully from the United States Department of Justice. You remember them? We talked to them yesterday. Hello, Snatch, City Attorney, talked about me. I don't think she got to mention my name, my cup of water. But we still have a Byzantine Portland police system. We had a proposal to, I don't know, some thought the auditor wanted to streamline it. It certainly wasn't the straight-to-gulag type of streamlining because it was really like more impunity and more emancipation. But I'm not as prepared as probably some of the following presenters. I'm hoping that when, that Mr. Handelman has chosen to testify on this, and he'll talk to us about why when we recruit citizens, that's not what we mean. We mean we're going to recruit lawyers and business owners. I didn't even take notes about the exact number of people, but we, some people think there are certain situations in this country that are a mess. And that maybe we should draw more clear lines to the percentage of attorneys that, oh, look, they're missing. They're missing from the city commission. I'm up here talking about attorneys having an excessive role in government. And attorney Steve Novick and attorney Nick Fish are not quite participating in public government at this moment. Beautiful. Perhaps they've gone to Salem or to, oh, their eyes are probably on the prize, the Senate. The point is that at least this is not called the Citizen Review Committee. Our current Citizen Review Committee is staffed by a former prosecuting attorney, was a twelve-year prosecutor DA in Michigan. So we're not really getting citizen involvement. We're gleaning some high-level people. The police don't prosecute those before the crime. The police troll among the poor and people of color and cause their problems there. And then their conduct is judged by, there are some interesting people on this panel. I trust a couple of candidates, but I hope Mr. Handelman will speak more comprehensively to the problem of this before you. Thank you. Next.
Mary Eng, Dan Handelman, and Kenner Swain.
Ms. Eng is asking if I would go first. I'm not going to do that. Good morning, mayor and commissioners. My name is Dan Handelman. I'm working on Cop Watch. The pool of civilians that we are talking about rotates onto the Police Review Board one at a time. So in other words, it is a misnomer to call it a board since the members never talk to each other. Also, since the Police Review Board's hearings are not open to the public or the media or as yet to the person who is harmed by the police, they never interact with the community. Because a CRC member rotates onto seven-member boards, no two PRB members ever sit together. For the Cop Watch, I sent a second inquiry to the Bureau recently about why their July 2016 PRB report had been posted, and they quietly placed the highly redacted case files online last week. I don't know why. They're so proud of this and they're so transparent, and this is the excuse of why the public is shut out that we get this report, that they don't put out a news release and inform people. When we wrote an email asking where that report is, we didn't even get an email back. Or was that the merger published something about it? That's how we knew it was published. And as I've said before, we play, we like to play Police Review Board report Mad Libs because it's so highly redacted, you don't have no idea what they're talking about. So we put in Kim Kardashian's name under it. Anyway, the PRB is such a secretive body, we have no idea how many members previously appointed are continuing. The PRB used to have nineteen or twenty members, and thirteen are being nominated. There are nine females and four males. Six are current or former attorneys. And while it sort of helps to have the legal analysis of serious police misconduct cases, the PRB is reviewing them for policy violations, not legal ones, so standards are much different. The question of how many people are in the board civilian pool is not held by the supporting paperwork, which states these nominees should fill vacancies of expired terms, quote, "bringing the total to thirteen." But there are only thirteen named for you today, so I'd like to hear an answer of how many total members there are in the pool. In addition, the auditor seems to have created new authority for the Bureau with the ordinance stating the Police Bureau will select citizen members from the Police Review Board on a pool of volunteers recommended by the city auditor and appointed by city council. The ordinance says the members will be nominated by the auditor and appointed by the council, not that the Bureau has any say in appointees. One of the applicant's biography states that she's looking forward to representing all voices not currently at the table for a safer community for all. The PRB members have no mechanism to communicate with the broader public about what they're doing. They never hold public meetings. The hearings are confidential, and names are not used in the meetings in their reports. The board is composed of three or four police, a manager from the IPR, and a PRB member, CRC members, who have served on the boards, as Mr. Walsh was saying, have reported feeling uncomfortable that it's a room full of police. This is probably amplified for the non-force-related PRBs where civilians are there solo. The simple solution to speeding up CRC appeals would be to allow PRB members to rotate onto CRC panels. They have the same training, and on that note, their trainings used to be public and in fact, used to be posted online as videos for the public to see. Can I go on for another thirty seconds or so, mayor?
May I as well? If you're interested in talking to me over there?
He's representing an organization. Similarly, so the community is not even invited to those trainings anymore where we used to be. So I do want to just say that, you know, it was brought up that part of the problem with having PRB meetings in public is, has to do with the contract. You have ten days to rescind your vote on that. It's passed, but I still recall on you, you suspended your rules to push PRB out of here. You suspended your rules to leave this chamber. You suspended your rules to change the order of the agenda. You can suspend your rules and revoke the contract. It doesn't go into effect until the end of it, and we urge you to rescind the contract right away. So these changes can be made in the oversight system that are urgent.
Get rid of the contract. Nullify it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Handelman. I'll busy.
City Council, nice to see you. My name is Mary Eng. Counselor, I want to commend you on your style of presentation. Whenever the mayor is absent, your manner of treating citizens has been nothing but respectful as far as I've seen, and I think you deserve a lot of credit for that because I think when you show respect, you receive respect back. And my mom kind of taught me about that theory in psychology is the looking last self. And if you're looking for the worst in people, you can bring out the worst easily. So I really thank you for that. And for these applicants or nominees, I want you to keep very much attention to the latest report from the DOJ. It is a very dense document, a lot of very heavy acronyms, but...
Give Laura her phone back.
Some very interesting points regarding the utilization of a neo-Nazi to harass Jewish people at the police accountability meeting with the Citizens Review Committee. It's very coded language, but you can find this on page 107 regarding using a neo-Nazi to assault the accountability process. I'm very thrilled with the DOJ assessment. They are moving forward. And I've been on a letter regging campaign, speaking at city council, facing direct retaliation, including being bruised at this chamber. So I have a process under review. John Rhodes at Internal Affairs is, he's investigating brutality that was applied to me for being as a trained paralegal and athlete hit or police retaliating victims. So you must know that there is direct retaliation and intimidation tactics, including pausing a weapon on you so I might be killed or... And Mr. Hale's won't let me know if he and Engstrom conspired, if he, Engstrom and Chandler conspired, if Walsh and Engstrom conspired. So he's got a lot of possibilities as to who came up with this dodgy excuse to beat me up. But it is very fishy, and you've got to be prepared for that. Because when I talked to John Rhodes at Internal Affairs, he said, "Oh, Todd Engstrom would never do anything like that." And I, you know what I said to him after he had covered me with bruises? Well, I've heard a lot of things about you, Todd Engstrom, but you're a perfect gentleman." Which was a stretch of the truth because he was not treating me like a normal Swedish man because in Sweden, we have gender equity. So I asked him, "Well, are you Swedish?" And I said, "I'm Norwegian." So then I was kind of like, wow, these Americans Scandinavians really aren't up to par on gender equity. This is quite unusual because I've actually studied policing memoranda from Sappho, from the Swedish police, because I find their progressive ideas about gender balance very important. And I have to make it known that on our COAB testimony last night, we went after Marshman's choking of his son, his stalking of his ex in police uniform. We went at it for, we kept, Rosenbaum and Watson were so exhausted from Jonas Geisler and the citizens that we kept after them. No woman in her right mind would go to a police force that involves a child abusing, choking stalker for a chief. In fact, to fact, with a shooting scandal with alcoholism. Ed, come on.
Ed, next.
Fire the chief.
Good morning. My name is Kenner Swain, and pardon me for turning my back, but there's a reason for that. I just would like to say as a citizen that it's...
I'm sorry, we can't hear you on the microphone if you do that.
I'd just like to say as a citizen that it's very stressful to come to these meetings. I'm fairly new to Portland. And here are all the rude interruptions that I've heard. So I'm a citizen. I'm not an elected official. No one's paying me the big bucks to sit here and say anything. These usually are open meetings, and so pretty much everyone gets a chance to sit and have their, have their say. I do feel that there's, so having said that, it's also disheartening. It was disheartening to not have an open public meeting when the contract was finally voted on. And I think having taught high school in Chicago for several years, having worked at a psychiatric hospital preaching sermons for years, it's, if you are being paid the big bucks or the medium bucks or whatever, it's your job to keep control of the room, and it's difficult. But it's, you know, it's your job, in my opinion, to arrest people, maybe not to use peppers for it, but to try to keep public meetings going. So maybe it is an idea. If it's too far outside the box, maybe you could cancel the contract and take heed of Commissioner Novick's objections and say, "We have an emergency, and maybe we could do something to reconsider." I don't advise anyone to resign. Everyone should finish their term, in my opinion. If you're being paid, you should do that. This particular issue, the Police Review Board does, it seems to me to be, I don't know how it's related to the Citizen Review Committee, but it seems like it's going down the wrong direction for less transparency. It seems that way from what I read. I don't know if the media is destroying things.
It's not.
I appreciate being able to speak without interrupting and destroy the comments. I really feel people have another thing. I feel like some...
Let's have a recess! I've had a recess!
Okay, we do. Come on.
Recess!
All right, Mr. Johnson, you're excluded.
I really feel like middle school...
We're recessed until he's excluded.
Middle school is the place for middle school, sir.
I will go to Harvard St. Hospital! That'd be a great place for me right now! Police, nine on one! I'll dial a phone.
Johnson, Mr. Johnson, go ahead and leave. It's a tough job. All right, I'm sorry. We're going to have to, we'll come back.
I'm leaving. I'm on my phone, and I'll get right here.
Okay.
I'm not leaving! Out! I know I need to leave. I need to leave when the police get here. Just like we've had to do this crap three weeks in a row.
Just like we've had to do this crap three weeks in a row, and nobody gives a shit about the fucking people!
No, people do care. People do care. You just need to be respectful of what everyone else has to say. You need to grow up. We don't need any more...
Shut up and get out! Get out! Get out! Police, come now!
I'll get you, sir.
Yes, long as I'm... I'm sorry, I appreciate what you're saying with your ideas, but... You'll need to leave the room before I do.
Charles, would you like to...
Hey, where's all the police that were here before? I mean, I'm glad that we have less police present than we did the past two weeks.
Mr. Johnson, you've been asked to leave if you'd like to go to the next level, if you'd be there.
Is this tour a good one?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.